Now is the time to be quiet. I'll call this meeting to order. This is the Tuesday, March 6, 2018, meeting of the Board of Aldermen. We'll stand for the pledge of allegiance, followed by invocation by Reverend Burt Montgomery, and then a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No, just however.
Please join me for our opening prayer. Our God, you are the maker of heaven and the maker of earth, and you have created each and every one of us in your image. Each and every one of us across our wonderful city, and each and every one of us gathered in this room, despite our different skin colors, or ethnic backgrounds, or nationalities, even despite our different creeds and religious beliefs and traditions, or lack of religious beliefs. One of the most primary and essential teachings we have from our holy scriptures, going all the way back to the very beginning, is that in the midst of this tremendous diversity, you, God, are here because we are here, and each of us bears witness to your likeness within. As we gather tonight to do the administrative work of the city of Starkville, and with the great diversity of our community on full display, may those of us who claim the name of Jesus live out the words of the great hymn, "We will guard each one's visiting and save each one's pride, and they will know we are Christians by our love." In the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Thank you. All right, we have a very crowded room tonight. I know that the fire marshals are there to keep a count so that we don't exceed our numbers and exceed the safety standards, so that's what those gentlemen are doing. The doors are open because I think there are a lot of people out in the hall there, so we're going to try to be very, we're going to try to speak up so that everybody can hear. The first item of our business is to approve the official agenda, including the consented items. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Alderman Systrow.
Because we do have a very full room, and I suspect a lot of the people who are here are here for one item, and I know that there are people here with other business, I would like to move item, excuse me, item 10A on the board business after public appearances and before public hearings.
I'm sorry? You have an objection? Okay, I have an objection from Alderman Vaughn, so we will leave it as it stands. Okay, any other proposed changes to the agenda? To the consent agenda or the official agenda? Seeing none, do I have a motion to accept the agenda with consented items?
So moved.
A motion from Alderman Little. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Miller. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, I have my motion of five to two. Motion carries. Okay, with the consented items, I'm going to read those. First is consideration of the minutes of the February 6, 2018, meeting of the mayor and board of Aldermen of the city of Starkville. Consideration of the minutes of the February 16, 2018, meeting of the mayor and the board of Aldermen of the city of Starkville, Mississippi. Under planning, we have consideration of travel for Buddy Sanders to attend the Mid-South Community's Fiber Forum in Huntsville, Alabama, March 21, 2018, with costs not to exceed $100. Consideration of an encroachment agreement with Janice Brown and Glenn Blatton, Lot 51 of the RE Josie subdivision number two, intersection of Lindbergh Boulevard and Josie Avenue. Consideration of advertising for requests for quotes for property, vehicle, and equipment insurance services. Request approval to renew a mechanical service agreement with Brizlin, Inc., for the quarterly inspection and maintenance of equipment located at City Hall, 110 West Main Street, at a cost of $1,000 per quarter, and to approve a new contract at the Police Department, 101 East Lampkin, at $1,250 per quarter. Under human resources, I have request authorization to advertise for a driver in the Sanitation and Environmental Services Department. Request authorization to advertise for an office assistant in the Utilities Department under the Warehouse Division. Request authorization to advertise for a foreman in the Utilities Department under the Water Division. Request authorization to advertise for an assistant manager in the Starkville Utilities Department. Request authorization to hire John Ricks as a wastewater operator in the Starkville Utilities Department under the Wastewater Division. And request authorization to hire Rashad Ruff, Cameron Hickey, John Person, Michael Banks, and David Fonseca as entry-level police officers in the Starkville Police Department. Under Police Department, I have request approval to declare a 1988 Chevrolet Caprice, a 2002 Ford Explorer, and a 2007 Ford Crown Victoria as surplus and sell to the highest or best bidder. I have request approval to allow Greenville Fitness to conduct yearly fitness exams for police and fire departments at a cost not to exceed $18,000 each. Sanitation Department has request authorization to declare 10 items listed as surplus property and to sell to the highest bidders. Under Utilities Department, we have request authorization for Robbie Gilliland to travel to Jackson, Tennessee, to attend TVPPA line worker final exam on April 17 and 18, 2018, at a total cost not to exceed $1,349.52 with advanced travel. Number two, request authorization for Terry Kemp to attend the Tennessee Valley Public Power Association, TVPPA, annual board of directors meeting and conference in Fairhope, Alabama, May 20th, 23rd, 2018, not to exceed $1,850. And that concludes the consented items.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. My pleasure. The next item on the agenda comes under Mayor's comments, and I'm going to make some statements here because I want to make sure I don't miss anything, and I'm inclined to go rolling around and not say the things I need to say. So if y'all will bear with me, I won't do that, and then allow the board to make comments, and then we will go into citizen comments. So first of all, I want to say how much we appreciate your attendance. We always are glad to have people come to our board meetings. Never had quite this many, but always glad to have you here so that you can see how we work. And I am guessing with a certain amount of certainty that most of you are here for the Pride Parade issue, and so that's going to be one of those things that I will ask about here in just a second. I want to set some expectation and ground rules for it. From my perspective, I know that there are lots of strong feelings on both sides, and I want to make sure that the opportunity to be heard is there. I'm very proud to say Starkville has had a long, long history of doing citizen comments. We have decades of doing this, and it is not one of those things that's required that we do. So this is one of those opportunities for us to hear from our citizens, our residents, and we're always glad to do that, and most of the time, we learn a whole lot. So it is an opportunity for both sides. Usually, we have folks who are talking about various and sundry things as opposed to one particular topic. And so for, as we go into citizens' comments, one of the things I want to do is offer those folks who aren't speaking about the Pride Parade issue to come forward and talk to us about the other things that they may have in their mind. I know that often Mr. Turner, for example, has many things that he wants to mention to us, so I want to give that opportunity first to those who may be not here for that particular issue. The way I'm going to structure this is that we're going to have 15 minutes for a pro side and a con side. Well, let me take the opportunity now. How many are here in favor of the board holding the Pride Parade? Hands up, please. Okay, all right. And how many are here against the board holding the Pride Parade? Hands up. Okay, all right, thank you. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to set aside the 15 minutes for each side, and what I'm hopeful will happen is that the side in favor and then the side against will choose, excuse me, will choose a speaker, or two, or three, and we will have them the opportunity to come forward and speak on that particular issue, because if not, what we'll do is I'll take the first five, or first however many come up that run with 15 minutes, and then we'll cut them off at 15 minutes, both sides. So that's kind of the way I'm going to work that, and I'm going to be keeping the 15-minute running clock. The city clerk is going to be keeping the three-minute clock if we end up with a bunch of folks who don't have a spokesperson. And the other thing I want to say about this is this is an opportunity for us to learn from one another. I am hopeful that we will remember that this is an opportunity to be respectful to your neighbor and be respectful to the board members. No personal attacks. This is about issues, and I want to make sure we stick to issues, please. With that in mind, I want us to be as silent as possible while others are speaking. No applause is necessary. You don't have to raise your voice. The acoustics in here are pretty good, so let's just keep in mind that we are all neighbors, and we are all friends, and we want to have a good dialogue and move forward in that vein. So I don't think I've forgotten anything. Oh, my goal is not to have to use this, so please don't make me use gavel, okay? I will consider it a successful night if the gavel is not necessary. And thank you again for being here. So with that, that's all I'm going to say about it, and I'm getting to the board members for comments. Go ahead.
I just wanted to say that I've had someone tell me that it's hard to hear in the door and out in the lobby and to see if there's anything we can do to help with that.
I don't know that we can. I don't think, we don't have any speaker opportunity out there. Maybe one day, we will get the budget person.
Next budget year.
Yeah, the budget chair to help us get some speakers out in the lobby area there. So any discussion or any comments, Alderman Vaughn?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, you said you control this, but the last time, I realized that this board is controlled by the board members, not you. You said you were going to give 15 minutes. I think if you're going to do anything, you should let every citizen have the right to speak instead of you controlling the board. If not, let the board take it through a vote, because the board controls this. You don't control this. You said you control it, but you doesn't. The board controls it. We have a strong board and a weak, mal system, so that's wrong right there. So I think you should, if you want to, let's give us a vote. In the previous board meeting, you let 16 people came up and had their way speaking. So why all of a sudden tonight, when you've got someone against you, want to limit the time? I don't understand that. But you should let every citizen here be heard. Let them all be heard. I assume we shouldn't put no time limit on them. We've got three items other than this on the agenda. We ain't got nothing all night to be here, so I'm willing to hear, I'm willing to hear what every citizen got to say instead of putting a time limit on it.
Okay, let me respond to that very quickly, Alderman Vaughn. And what I, I control the conduct of the meeting, and if the board wants to vote on that, absolutely, you have every right to do so, and I'm happy for the board to do that. So Alderman, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Perkins.
Thank you, Mayor. To the mayor, city attorney, and all you who are out here this evening, Chief Nichols, I want to thank you for the presence of your officers here. I told them I always feel good when I see them. I even see my neighbor out there this evening, so I appreciate that as well. I just want to take this brief opportunity at this moment to concur with the gentleman from Ward Seven. He correctly stated that, and let me professionally say, sometimes we all have to be reminded in our various settings as to our role as to whether it's at City Hall, or at church, or at home, or in the community. And I discussed this in a public setting not too many meetings ago, or at some location, as I fulfill my duties in Alderman, with our Honorable City Attorney. And I want to make sure we all understand this, and I've been at this job for almost 25 years, come July 6 of 2018. I started this on July 6 of 1993. So I think I've got a good understanding on this, because the law has not changed since then. The gentleman from Seven mentioned, and I want to concur with him, regardless of what the outcome may be tonight, but one thing I do want to leave with our understanding what is the duty and responsibility of each member of this governing body, is I understand the role of the mayor is, under our co-charter formal government, is that the mayor has superintending authority to oversee and implement the acts and actions of the legislative branch of government, which is the Board of Aldermen. So that's the mayor's role. Of course, the statute does indicate that the mayor's role is to preside over the meeting. This meeting does not belong to the mayor. That's the law in Mississippi. This is the mayor, I can hear a little knocking. I want some quietness in this room when I'm talking. So it is the role of the mayor to preside over this meeting and to vote in case of a tie. Now, the mayor controls the meeting to the point of view that she's the providing officer, but I want everybody to be clear in terms of the media and all those who are streaming their line with us tonight to understand that it is the Board of Aldermen who is the legislative body of this city and who makes the ultimate decision if the mayor is not satisfied of our decision, and certainly she has options under her executive power. So, you know, no one person, in my opinion, in my 25 years, even before I got to the board and represented various boards and commissions and arguing cases before the Mississippi Supreme Court, I clearly know this. So what I'm saying is that whatever this board decides, the vice mayor does not set a time limit. The previous four mayors have never tried to set a time limit, you know, without the understanding it's the Board of Aldermen, you know, and Aldermen may get voted down, but the gentleman from Seven is correct. So I'm not going to come here and tell you this is the way the vice mayor is going to conduct the meeting, even if I'm presiding. So the gentleman is right from Seven. We need to just have this brief amount of time. We're no herd. We're all elected officials. I told the board the last term, Mr. Editor from Star Haven, New Houston, during the 2013 to 17 term, I'm never in a herd when I get here. You know, some may have to go to the ballgame, may have to go to a dance, recital, or wedding. I mean, I love this job. That's why I'm here for 25 years. I'm not a herd. I tell my wife and children I get home when I get there. I mean, this is my duty and responsibility. Ain't no herd. This is the city of Starkville, and we ain't no herd. The citizens deserve the right to be heard. We work for the citizens. We are the servants of the citizens. We are subordinate to the citizens. We don't dictate to them. You know, when we run for office, we go around knocking on doors. We vote for the vice mayor. You know, I never told nobody I'm in charge. I go to them because they in charge, because without them, I can't be sitting here. They have gotten me here for 25 years. You know, people get tired of hearing me talking up here. I don't care. I mean, I'm sworn in. I'm here. You know, the people love me being here, and I want every citizen out there, may get voted down, Mr. Reporter, but I want every citizen out there to be heard their three minutes. Now, why are we going to change the rule in the middle of the ballgame? Just like the Super Bowl. They tell you the rules, what they are, before the game starts. You don't change the rules on Tom Brady in the middle of the ballgame. Belichick, you don't change the rules on him. They know what the rules are before the game gets started. You just got to be good enough to beat them, but they're hard to beat. Great athletes, they do the job well. I'm trying to do my job well. So tonight, as the gentleman from Seven said, at the last meeting, we allowed everybody come on down. All seven of Aldermen sat back. The mayor sat back. Correct me if I'm wrong, you pull the tape out. I mean, who is Mr. the viewing, Mr. Matthews over there? He can pull the tape out if you think I'm wrong. The last meeting, everybody came down who wanted to speak. We all sat back. We just were very patient, no hurry. Who else want to speak? Anybody else want to speak? They all came back. Nobody had no objection, no rules were talked about, no limitations. All those in far, all those against, and now all of a sudden, I don't know why, all of a sudden, we want to change the rules in the middle of this ballgame? What is it? Ask yourself the question. We may get voted down on this, but you are the ultimate people who will decide, because we work for you. We don't need to change the rules. The citizens, we have a democracy where these people can come in and speak. That's what citizens' comments are for. We have recognized this. I know at least for 25 years, for people to come up here and exercise their three minutes to speak, whether we like it or not. I may not vote the way that they speak about, but I'm going to let them be heard. They were heard at the last meeting, so why are we going to change the rules tonight? If we have to stay here till 3:00 in the morning, that is our duty. Even the girls' basketball team is playing Mississippi State as great as they are. We need to be here and hear the people out. We not no herd. What are we in a herd for? We all said we wanted to be here. We were sworn here, right here in this room, on the third day of July of 2017. The Honorable Senior Chancellor Dorothy W. Cologne swore us in. Now, I'm not no herd, and nobody not going to rush me, and nobody not going to rush my constituents, and nobody not going to rush these citizens of Starkville, Mississippi. Now, the board may say otherwise, but I'm going to speak up for you to be heard. I'm used to getting our voted, and I'm expecting I probably will. But I'm going to talk up for you tonight. Now, some might have gone to follow me and talk about what we need to do, and this meeting has been scheduled for the first and third Tuesday night of each month. Now, what's the hurry tonight? Want to give 15 minutes to all these people in this room? Now, I go to church on Sunday morning. I don't rush to preach. He going to tell me about death, burial, and resurrection. I feel good about it. It's a good message. He getting me out of my seat. I don't be in no herd. I'm not no herd tonight. Now, I don't know how much longer I'm going to be here on this board, but I tell you one thing, while I'm here, I'm going to give the best of service. I know there are some who are tired of listening to me, but when I'm gone, when I am gone, you always know that the Aldermen, the vice mayor, gave the best of service. Now, I don't care what people say. I don't care what they think about me. I don't care how they talk about me, because they are not my savior. They are not my savior. I don't care what they say, but we got a right to be heard. We got a right to be heard. They may come back with me with a vote. They may vote me 6 to 1, 5. I don't care. I've been faced with 6 to 1 votes many nights since 1993. I still went home to 6:20 hospital room, had a good night's sleep. But I'm going to speak up for the people, and I'm not in no herd. I know there are some on this table want me to shut up, but I'm no herd to do that. So we need to allow every citizen the right to be heard tonight. We need to allow every citizen three minutes. Whoever want to talk, that's what citizen comments for. If we're not going to allow each citizen three minutes, we should have had that on the rules. Don't change the rules after the people get here. What notice did we give them about the change in the rule? Because it's convenient to us? Because it is convenient to us? We didn't tell them that. We need to follow our own rules. We need to follow our own deadlines. We need to follow our own policies. So the gentleman from Seven is correct. Now, I don't have no ballgame to go to. I think they may have a baseball game somewhere out there. I'm not in a herd. I can hear about the score in the morning, read the newspaper, because this is my job to do. So let's keep it the right perspective. We are here at a meeting. A lot of these people have been here for a long time. We need to hear those in far and against and then make a decision. And we make the decision, it's going to be whatever it is. So that's what the vice mayor has to say, but my comments are tailored solely to support the gentleman from Seven, because he is correct. We want to change the time in the middle of the stream. We want to change the rule in the middle of the stream. If you want to limit the three minutes or less than three minutes, come up with a policy and have two public hearings and get some input from the citizen. That's what we do with these public hearings we got tonight. There's an opportunity to change the rules tonight on some different things. We've got public hearings coming up. We have two public hearings before we enact. So let's have a public hearing about the rules for citizen comments. If you want citizens to speak less than three minutes, let's put it on the agenda, come up with a policy, come up with an ordinance. Let's have some public hearings on it. So with that being said, Mayor, I think, you know, we need to be consistent with what we have done in the past. The gentleman from Seven is correct, whether you agree with him or not. I mean, you may not agree with him, but he's telling you right, and I'm telling you right. So a lot of times, you know, people just don't want to agree with even if you're right. So this is on my heart to say, and the right thing to say, and may get voted down, but at least the truth has been told. And with that being said, Mayor, I yield the floor.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. And let me say, this is not the first time we have done this, so this is not precedential in nature, but I understand what you're saying. Any other comments from the board members? Okay, hearing none was, Vice Mayor, did you want to make a motion to hold the citizens' comments at three minutes?
I yield the floor to Justice Minister Mayor.
I'm just asking a question. Okay. All right, thank you. Well, we'll proceed then. We will begin with citizens' comments, and something that's beaming up there. Oh, I know what it is. Sorry, guys. There's a silent button on this thing somewhere. Okay, citizens' comments. Well, we will start with the, Mr. Turner? And when you come up, if you would give your name, please, and your ward, if you're a Starkville resident.
Good evening to the mayor and board. My name is Alvin Turner. We're going to do a little different tonight. I want to recognize the mayor and the board of Aldermen, the president of NACP and Security, the Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
We have some issues that is business-wise, and that is, we have one female driver, NSU was racial, attacked, and spit on about a week and a half ago. Students tried to catch the assailant, but he ducked on him. But also, we have a smart, but female driver, she was threatened by individuals. We know who he is, but we need to try and make it safe as possible with female drivers. They are not going to mess with the older drivers, but the younger drivers, they feel like that it's an opportunity to shoot whatever. On the airport express GTI, it leaves the mill one hour and 25 minutes before flight, and it also leaves Walmart an hour and 45 minutes before flight.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Okay, anyone else wishing to speak on some other issue rather than the Pride Parade? No one. Okay, well, with that in mind, those who are speaking in favor of the Pride Parade, I will start to run a 15-minute clock. So from my perspective, if you wish to come forward and speak, if there's a spokesperson for the group, that's just fine, but we will run with 15 minutes. So whoever's coming forward, now would be the time. So, whoever is, whoever's coming forward, now would be the time.
Hello, my name is Jacqueline Posley, and I am here in favor of the pride parade. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight and to be heard. I really do appreciate that, regardless of the outcome of the situation. Let me begin by saying that I, I am an advocate, because I was born into it. I was raised into a same-sex household. I did have two mothers for my entire life, but I don't want to approach this as an emotional, uh, approach. I'd like to take this as a more objective opportunity to speak about the rights that are being violated, the constitutional rights. For that reason, I would like to ask the board, Mayor Spruill, if you would hear us out objectively speaking, not from the point of my personal experience, not from the point of any of our experiences. And I'd like to end by saying Matthew seven, one through six. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Posley.
Mayor, I'm gonna interrupt. We can stop the clock if we can, but...
It stopped?
I guess because this is national attention, and I'm no, I don't think from a housekeeping standpoint, we've ever addressed this, that someone need to be a voter or a citizen of Starkville, or is this open to anybody that wants to come in and speak, or?
This is, this is citizens' comments. I have never, uh...
I neither.
Over all the years, I have never seen us restricted to only residents or voters in the city of Starkville.
That's good, thank you.
Okay?
Mayor may be recognized.
Just a, yes, you may.
And Board, I wanted to, I wanted to reemphasize the law that Vice Mayor Perkins spoke about. He, he's right, the Board controls the agenda, so if, if any of you have a problem with the 15-minute requirement, of course, that's controlled by majority voter of the Board.
Okay, all right, we'll start again?
Mayor may be recognized.
Yep, I'm sorry. Yes, sir. Alderman Vaughn?
I think I'd rather take this through a vote and let, let us decide whether...
Okay.
Would we stay with 15 minutes or what?
Certainly, all right. You make a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we decide whether we stay with the 15 minutes or we give every citizen a chance to speak.
Okay, Alderman Vaughn has made a motion. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Yes.
Second, second.
I have a second from Alderman, uh, for Vice Mayor Perkins, for everyone to have an opportunity to speak and, and to, um, not use 15 minutes, so, uh, discussion. Alderman Miller.
Alderman Vaughn, um, could you clarify the motion? I think that was...
Instead of using the 15 minutes that she got for each side, opposite side, give every citizen a chance to have their three minutes to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, any other discussion? Alderman Carter?
Typically, independent of any subject matter, if it's something where it's a packed house from a time constraint, um, I would say in my nine years on board, we've probably used this seven or eight times that I can remember. It's not abnormal, it's not a, anything related to this subject matter. It's just anytime you have a packed house and, uh, um, all of us received numerous texts, numerous emails, numerous phone calls, so I think we're well-versed on, on the issue and the subject at hand, so thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of, uh, limiting discussion to 15 minutes, I mean, to, um, for, for the citizens to have three minutes per person, um, please... Un, un, well, three minutes unlimited, three minutes per person for however many wish to speak, so. Um, if you would answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carter?
Nay.
Alderman Sis Trump?
Nay.
Alderman Little?
Nay.
Alderman Walker?
Yea.
Alderman Miller?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Uh, yea, who was the gentleman for the vote?
Yea.
Okay.
Alderman Vaughn?
Yea.
Okay, by a vote of four to three, that motion fails. Okay, and we will resume citizens' comments under the original discussion place. I have 53 seconds that have been used, then this is for the pro side. If you would, please state your name, sir.
My name is Hunter Andrews, and I'm a resident of, uh, Ward Two. First of all, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank, uh, Ward, uh, Alderman Miller, Walker, and Sis Trump for voting in favor of the parade, and Mayor Spruill, uh, expressing your disappointment in the alderment. I appreciate that. I'd first like to, over the recent weeks, we've talked about why should people have a parade? Why should members of the LGBT have a parade? I'd like to give some of those reasons, because we celebrate, uh, women's rights that they fought for. We celebrate African-American rights that they fought for. They have parades from time to time in different communities. We, as members of the LGBT community, are still fighting for those rights. Members of the heterosexual community do not know what it's like to fight, to be able to marry the person you love, be able to share same insurance. They don't know what it's like to go home and to have to tell parents, loved ones, family, and friends the three words "I'm gay" and wonder if they're going to love you from the next second. That is why we need a parade, why we have the entitlement to have a parade, to celebrate the trials and tribulations that we have gone through and still fight through. I'm gonna end by asking a question to one of the aldermen.
Mayor, we don't respond to questions.
Yeah, they're not gonna respond.
Okay. Um, I just want to bring up a point that I heard one of the recent aldermen speak, that voted against the parade. I'm a teacher at Sudeth Elementary School, and he recently spoke at a Black History Month program, and he's talked about how he went to high school during the segregation and the trials and tribulations that he experienced. But he closed with the comment of saying, "Love and accept everyone and respect them and their rights." And I'd like to ask, or I'd like to just mention that I don't believe that that alderman is practicing what he preaches, and how could that alderman...
Mr. Andrews, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor. Uh, Mr. Andrews, that's not directed at, it's the single person, let's keep it to the issue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, did you have something you want to say?
No, I just say, get it personal.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, uh, my name is Ryan Handern. As you can tell from my lack of an accent, I'm actually not a Starkville native. I moved here from Wyoming in 2008 after my first deployment to Iraq. I've lived in eight states, but I really love it here. Uh, this is a fantastic town, fills a great college atmosphere, wonderful food, and awesome people that come from all corners of the world and really all walks of life. Even though I've lived all over, I have deployed to Iraq for a total of two times for the Mississippi Army National Guard as a combat medic, so there is a huge part of my heart that is filled with Mississippi mud. I really do love this town, and I too am afraid that it is changing. I'm afraid that, uh, this city is becoming a city of sin. The Book of Acts, chapter 10, verse 28 reads...
Well, Mr., I'm sorry, this was gonna be all, all...
I'm, I'm for.
Oh, I apologize.
We're, we're getting there, Madam Mayor, excuse me.
I apologize, but I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It's a difference then.
Okay, I'm sorry. Shame on me for prejudging.
Exactly. The, the Book of Acts, chapter 10, verse 28 reads, "And he said to them, 'You yourselves know how unlawful it is for a man who is not a Jew to associate with a foreigner or to visit him, and yet God has shown me that I should not call any man unholy or unclean.' This Bible verse condemning bigotry has been left out of many awfully condemning conversations lately. Your prejudice shows, and it will not be tolerated by the open-minded people of this community. As a veteran, I am disgusted by your lack of respect for the freedom given to every person who walks this great country's soil. I am a straight man. You're not even taking away something from me, but an attack on my peers is an attack on me. You, being elected aldermen, were not given the power to deny Americans of their constitutional rights. A properly submitted parade request has been denied because few aldermen think their opinions matter more than the civil liberties of other American citizens. I am kind of mad, but I'm really just so disappointed. I'm disappointed that you hate a group of people so much that you won't let them get together and walk down the street. How can you call yourselves the leader, leaders of our people when you don't want some of us walking on the same streets as you? What, what would be your next step? I did read that separate drinking fountains haven't worked here before, so don't waste your time. I told you earlier that I've lived in eight states. My mom had three kids, and my dad left when I was eight, so we moved around all the time. My mom worked hard, constantly taking promotions to make the lives of her children better. What that meant for me is that I was constantly moving around. I went to 13 schools by the time I graduated high school. I was always the new kid, and I just wanted someone to stand up for me. I could see on the kids' faces that they wanted to help but didn't know how or didn't have the courage. I don't know if you can see it on my face, uh, but I'm telling you, fine aldermen, sitting before me, that your bullying will not be tolerated. You do not get to sit here and make judgments on the lifestyles of other people. You were given this position to make the city a better place to live for all of its people, not the ones you personally like. Please do not just hear, but also listen to these words from the first book of John, chapter two, verse 11. "But the one who hates his brother is in the darkness and walks in the darkness and does not know where he is going because the darkness has blinded his eyes. There is hate here, hate for a group of people that you don't understand and that unfortunately you're willing, you're not willing to understand. The city of Starkville will not let your hate lead us into the darkness. Your bigotry will not be tolerated, your hate will not be tolerated, and I demand that the permit for the parade on March 24th be granted." Thank you.
No, no, don't, don't, don't make me pull the gavel out, please. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Patty Drapala. I'm a citizen of Ward Three. I'm here to represent Indivisible Golden Triangle, but I think I'm gonna speak from the heart and speak as a citizen of Starkville and as a resident of Ward Three. I too read the interview in the Sunday paper with Henry Vaughn, and Henry, I was two classes behind you.
Patty, Patty, don't, don't...
Miss, Miss Patty, the, so now, this is now the second comment that we've come up here, and I appreciate your being up here. Okay?
Okay.
And I, I want to make it very clear, okay, that we're not gonna come up here if we can, okay?
Right.
Please do not come up here, and, and, um, it takes a lot for the seven of us to sit up here, and that is the second time now that I can tell that we've referenced Alderman Vaughn. And I want to make it very clear that despite the way that the seven of us vote up here, and we might have differences in the way that we decide on policy, okay? But I, I would very much so appreciate it, moving forward, if we did not direct aldermen directly and especially with personal attacks, because there's something that we've all got to realize in this room, is that no matter what happens tonight, the seven of us, we, we're gonna be back at this table in a couple weeks, and the more that we have those comments that come up, and it, it, it's divisive of this board, and, uh, I have a lot of respect for every single alderman at this table, I really do, especially Henry Vaughn. Uh, I've enjoyed getting to know Henry since I've been on this board. So, if you could, please, please refrain from, uh, the personal attacks.
This was not meant as a personal attack. I was a student in that same situation. I wanted to compliment him, because he brought up an important point. There were two groups who didn't know how to talk to each other, and they had to find a way to learn to talk to each other, and they did, and what was the common ground that they found? Sports, and I'd like to add music, sports and music. So, I apologize. I have great respect for Henry Vaughn. I went to school with him.
Thank you.
He was a great football player, so...
Thank you.
I'm sorry, my approach is wrong. Anyway, I just come up here to say, I urge the board to find common ground. We have elected you to be our government, and we look to you for leadership in solving problems. So, again, I urge each and every one of you, in this situation, let's find the common ground. Let's do this, and remember, yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Drapala.
I'm Pam Wasson. I've lived in Mississippi all my life, and I am a voter in Starkville. And my son went to school at Starkville High School. He got a free ride to Mississippi State and chose to go to University of Memphis, where he graduated with honors. My son is gay. He did not feel like he fit in, and I feel like Starkville needs to be a place, because the university is the major place where people come and work, and I feel like that we should be welcoming of all the students that could come in here. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, we're at nine minutes and 40 seconds, so...
My name is Dwayne Lyon, and I'm a resident of Ward Four. Several months ago, my wife and I were, uh, two of the people that helped host a, uh, visiting, uh, artist-in-residence at the Knoxulby Wildlife Refuge. She came here from the Netherlands. And the first time we saw her, uh, she expressed great concerns about coming here for two reasons. The first one had to do with the, the gun issue, which I, I couldn't defend. The second one had the concern, concerned, the perception that she said was widespread in the Netherlands, and which I know from my personal travels, also includes many Western European countries, that Mississippi is a backward place where people still discriminate against anyone who looks or in any other way is different than they are. My wife and I were able to assure her that Starkville, Mississippi is not like that, that this is an inclusive community, but I'm now beginning to wonder if perhaps I'm confusing Starkville, the city, with Mississippi State, the university. I hope I'm not. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, uh, my name is Deborah Akin. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Progressive Starkville Network, so if any members are in the audience that want to stand up and, um, support this statement, please do. Um, we wanted to thank the members who voted in favor of the pride parade, but the members of Progressive Starkville Network are discouraged and disheartened by the clearly illegal and discriminatory vote on February 20th, when four aldermen denied Starkville Pride their petition for Starkville's first pride parade. We support and encourage the professional and thorough work of the Starkville Pride organizers, who have planned a positive and legal parade. We encourage an inclusive and supportive Starkville, and we decry the fearful intolerance and hateful response shown by some of our city's government officials that can do nothing but harm our town. We affirm that these aldermen do not represent the intentions of the 500-plus members of this group, even if they are our elected aldermen. I'm in Ward Six. Um, we feel these leaders are not fulfilling that title with their backward-moving vote, and we choose to attempt to fill the leadership void created by this vote by offering our support and by affirming our beliefs that all people be treated with equality and respect, not just regardless of their skin color or gender or sexual orientation, but because none of these matter in the realm of our values and moral obligations. During this year's Martin Luther King Junior Day celebrations, Starkville was referred to as a family, and we believe that every law-abiding member of our family should have an equal right to assemble peacefully and an equal right to the support of the city. When someone is not treated with equality and respect, we rise up, we show up, and we speak up. With every step toward equality that is won, those that win or understand the fight must prop up the next charge. It's the intention of the Progressive Starkville Network to serve as one such prop. We therefore urge the Starkville Board of Aldermen to reconsider their vote. We request this for several reasons. We believe in the equality of our citizens. We believe this vote will have a larger economic ramifications. We do not want to be forced to pay for the inevitable litigation brought forth by this vote. Finally, we urge the Starkville Board of Aldermen to reconsider their vote, because this vote does not accurately represent the Starkville family. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Minute and a half left. Nope. Don't do it. No, don't do that, please. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Diana Lyon. I'm in Jason's Ward. I'm the one that nominated Rosa Stewart and Sadie Rearn to be honored this year at the Unity Park, as I interviewed both of them when they were honored at Mississippi State University Women's Week in the eighties. My neighbor, Jean Marslack, who couldn't be here tonight, told me that anyone against the pride parade would not be considered for inclusion in the Unity Park, as they are being given, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. All of 25 seconds left.
My name is Emma Crumpton, and I'm representing everyone from Starkville High School who said they wanted to be here but are too scared to come. Thank you.
Thank you. That was perfect. That's 15 minutes. All right, thank you all so much. Okay, now, we have the opportunity for those who are against the parade to come forward. Okay, now, we have the opportunity for those who are against the parade to come forward. Ms. Dorothy, you gonna, you gonna come first? Okay.
Please.
I'm sure Pastor Buckner will help you get up there.
I'm all right. Good evening to everybody, to all my aldermen, so I would like to say, I'm Dorothy Isaac, everybody know me, and everybody got my telephone number, because I've received plenty of calls, said I would like to come, but I'm scared to speak up. Well, I'm not scared to speak up, because my God is my God, and I'll still say, He's my God. I would like to thank the gentlemen that voted, and I would like to say you represented fine, and you, the rest who didn't vote, that's all right, you still represent, you my aldermen, and I tell you that all the time, because I come to the meetings. I'm a citizen of Starkville, Mississippi, and I do come to the meeting. Sometimes, we have no six, I can go to sleep sixteen times back there and wouldn't mess up nobody by standing. But I would just like to say tonight, I'm coming, because I know, I want to know what is the cost of this parade. We got a, Mrs. Stone, we got a, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to do that, but we got, we got problems now with our budget. And I would like to know, if we have Starkville Police Department, Starkville Utilities, Starkville Fire Department, Starkville Sanitation Department, who's gonna miss their paycheck when it's time for them to be paid? And any other costs to the city? And do you, I would like to know, do we have other parades that have been around these people hometown? Because I know they're students, most of them are students, but I'm a citizen here. I pay taxes, too, as a matter of fact, true tax. I said I wasn't gonna have nothing to say tonight, but I just can't hold it, I really can't hold it, as a citizen, as a citizen for fifty-eight years. And I know tomorrow, my phone, at night about three o'clock, everybody wanna call me and talk, but then I hang up and say what they gonna do to me. I lack the threads. I'm here as a citizen, and I'm doing my duty to come up here, and I come all the time, not only for one subject, I come for all the time. But I just want to know who all have parades in their city, because I never, I never hear wrong, I never hear wrong, and I would just like to know. But as for this thirty-two thousand that's gonna cost the city of Starkville to have a parade, it's wrong. God says wrong. It's in Leviticus, it's in the first chapter of the Bible. It's wrong. It's not a choice. This is not civil rights. Civil rights is what you do that's right. That's what civil rights is. I don't know who compared that to civil rights. We were not born, we were not born in slavery, because, thank God, I was, and I love my people, and I was not. I was not born into slavery. So I would just like to say, and I would like for everybody to know, I think the decision was made, we need to bring our meetings back here, and we don't need to have them on Friday evenings, we came with three or four folks, because they need to be held back here. That's why we elected you, my officials, we elected you to come and have meetings here, not to have private meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Isaac.
Mayor, I have a question before I read mine.
Yes, sir.
If it's possible. Pertaining to what you said at the beginning, just asking if there was anybody that represented the whole group. We don't have a whole.
I gather not, so.
But, but there are a few that I do represent, and I can't really say I speak for them, but I'm asking for a little bit of lenience with this. I'm gonna read as fast as I can.
Okay.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Alderman, I'm Johnny Buckner. I'm here as a lifelong citizen of Ward Seven that has lived around the world, and I want to thank each of you for your sacrificial service to our community. It is not easy to lead a diverse community, especially in the extremely polarizing times in which we live. I'm also here to say thank you to the four aldermen that on February 20th chose to deny the request for a Pride Parade. I just happened to be here at the last board meeting. I would like to address some of the board's procedural issues, in particular, the value of openness as opposed to deception and hidden agendas. From my observation, this was not an issue of content of message or identity of any group, but a matter of an issue of city sponsorship and practicalities of time, place, and manner of the event itself. It has been clear that four of the aldermen were not aware of the hidden details behind the request that was denied, and I can understand why. One, there was no mention of LGBT, gay, homosexual, or lesbian in the public agenda distributed nor on the cover sheet summarizing the details of the application presented to the board. Hidden in small print at the bottom of the page of the actual application was LGBT, found two times in a list of sponsors and beneficiaries. Starkville Pride and Pride Parade were mentioned, but Starkville Pride is a new organization. Starkville Pride could have easily been understood as civic pride. There was a mention of art market on the cover sheet, which, with the request application, but there was no mention of it being a queer art market as promoted by Starkville Pride on Twitter. It seems that these details were intentionally hidden by someone, and that was in the know. In fact, in the last meeting with two TV stations with cameras rolling, who left immediately after the vote, it seems the media was more informed about the controversial nature of this than the four aldermen that voted to deny. Finally, this didn't have to happen. The sixteen that spoke for this in the last meeting each spoke at length as to their appreciation for the love and acceptance they have found in Starkville. If you heard their statements, you would know that their experience is a unanimous affirmation that Starkville is not homophobic. I believe that this is because of the foundation of our community as biblically based. Therefore, we willingly and joyfully choose to love like Jesus. I cried as I saw the tears of the LGBT advocates at your last meeting. I saw that they felt rejected, unheard, and abused. That hurt me, and we can do better. However, when anyone wants to parade their sexual lifestyle in our streets without any accountability or definition as to what they will and will not do, they force the very ones that have loved and accepted you the most to stand against them and to stand for their moral and/or religious convictions. This punishes the ones that have loved them the most. The issue here is that under the First Amendment, the parade organizers have the right to speak for themselves. They have the right to a parade permit, but they do not have the right to have city endorsement of that message. They do not have the right to force the city to speak their message or to use the city's imprimatur and credibility to enhance their own message. Pride parades around the country and even around the world have included offensive elements like public sexual activity, offensive vulgar sexual speech, and intentional mockery of Christianity, as well as people of faith who are morally opposed to homosexual activity. Our church and the greater Christian community loves all individuals as Jesus loves them. Now, this is my suggestion in summary. It is, it is an appropriate exercise of government authority to safeguard laws prohibiting obscene and lewd public acts. At the same time, it is appropriate for the government to respect the First Amendment rights of all people, where they do not transgress those laws. For these reasons, I hope that the Board of Aldermen will approve the permit in due time, with proper questions answered in the application, all proper questions answered. I hope that you will approve the permit, but will withhold city endorsement or sponsorship from the Pride Parade and will caution Pride Parade participants against activity which would be clearly illegal.
Thank you, sir.
God bless you.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak against? Yes, sir. If you will state your name, please.
I'll do it. I'm Tim Cummins, and they don't pay y'all enough to put up with this. Y'all, I really, I really commend y'all for serving our community. And I'm just a little old chicken veterinarian, okay? And, you know, I've come up here and just wanna, wanna state, you know, that I'm against it, but maybe not so, not for a moral reason, you know? I've just studied anatomy and physiology, and the male body was not made for male body, the female body for the female. It's very clear from anatomical and physiological processes that it's abnormal. Now, just because I've already heard that I hate, you know, you think you get accused, I've already heard that I hate because I disagree. Already heard that, that I'm a bigot simply because I disagree. No! I just disagree, okay? Can we, can we not just at least acknowledge that there's a difference of opinion here and based, whether it's based on anatomy, whether it's based on morality? And I just want, I've also heard the term bullying. I guarantee you, you guys have been bullied. You've gotten emails, you've gotten phone calls, you've gotten this, that, and the other, just berating you. So who's really doing the bullying? I, I question you. And have you, have you really touched base with your constituents in your district instead of the outsiders or the loud and proud? Now, which one are you really paying attention to? I appreciate the pressures that you feel. I understand it. And I just really commend you again and thank you for that, but I do want to close with this comment. We opened up this whole session with a prayer to the Almighty God, okay? We opened it up and prayed to Him essentially for His wisdom and counsel. And I pray that that will be upheld. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. We have ten minutes, we're at ten minutes, so we have five minutes left. Mr. Turner.
My name is Avon Turner. All right, when God speaks, we listen. Thunder and lightning, you don't want to make God mad. All right, things that you just don't tolerate. If we do this, then we're gonna have the hate group wanna have parade. It's a limit to what you can and can't do. All right, if we do this, then you can look for the hate group to wanna parade next. Then we gonna have chaos. Last, come and say, and make the decision that you can live with.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Okay, anyone else? There are four minutes left. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, we'll close, close citizen comments. Thank you all. Y'all did not force me to use the gavel, and I am very grateful. I appreciate that, and I appreciate your comments and being willing to come forward. So, all right, we will move next to public appearances. We have one public appearance. It's Citizen Supportive of Equality and Freedom of Speech, Lambda Professionals. And who is the representative for that? Ms. Onan.
And you have, you have ten minutes. My name is Megan Onan. I'm in Ward Five, and I just want to thank you all for allowing me to be here tonight, and thank you for all that you do. When I was preparing for this speech, I got to a place where I was stuck, and I knew I didn't want to address the Bible, and I knew that I didn't want to address the law. We've been circling those two topics for a while now, and the only progress I feel we have made is causing more division and hurt feelings. Everyone thinks they are right and the other side, side, is wrong. This is the great human divide. In that moment when I was feeling stuck, my mom called me. I told her I was struggling with what to say and how to say it. She went on to remind me of the most important things, that we are all afraid of being rejected, that we have all been hurt, and that we all want to be accepted. Gay, straight, Christian, Buddhist, agnostic, Republican, Democrat, Jewish, white, black, Sikh, Hindu, Native American, rich, poor, female, male, transgender, Taoist, immigrant, Mormon, Muslim, atheist, and the list could go on and on. These are our community members. We all have different labels, but we all want the same thing, to be loved and accepted. The challenge we all face is how to love and accept one another when the going gets tough, when we feel hurt, when we feel scared, when we feel like we aren't being heard, when we are afraid of what everyone else is going to think of us. And to be honest, being up here right now and putting myself out there, I'm scared. These feelings aren't new to me, fear. Being a person who is gay isn't easy. Being gay sets you up for being completely misunderstood. The reality of our world is that the hate crimes have increased drastically since 2015, and the reality of our world is that our children are killing themselves and each other. There is deep hurt and deep sadness among us. Exclusion is the culprit for the violence in the world. Decisions that are being made by our officials, they disconnect us from each other and either make us feel less than or more than, and neither way is okay. Is the decision to deny the LGBTQ community a Pride Parade a big deal? Yeah. It tells one part of our community that they are less than, and it tells another part of our community that they are more than. According to the CDC, LGBTQ youth seriously contemplate suicide almost three times the rate of heterosexual youth. LGBTQ youth are almost five times as likely to have attempted suicide compared to heterosexual youth. And in a national study, forty percent of transgender adults reported having made a suicide attempt. Ninety-two percent of these individuals reported having attempted suicide before the age of So why do we want a Pride Parade? Because the LGBTQ community is at risk. Lives are at risk. The LGBTQ community needs to know that they are worthy, that they are loved, and that they are accepted, and the intention of the parade is to celebrate who we are. It's really that simple. As a person who is gay, you spend your entire life hiding, doing everything you can to avoid letting people know who you are. And when it gets to a point that it hurts too much to hide, then you must dig deep, find, you must dig deep to find enough confidence to be bold enough to be yourself. It's a daily struggle to grab my wife's hand in public or not. It's a question that goes through my mind every day. Sometimes I am brave enough and don't care what other people think, and other times I just can't muster up the courage. Something as simple as holding a hand, another human being's hand, can be tough for so many. Several weeks ago, I heard a seven-year-old child call gay people disgusting. The one thing I heard that hurt me the most after I came out was being called disgusting. It's a horrible thing to say about another human being. Now, where did that child learn that, that gay people are disgusting? They learned it from an adult. Every decision that we make, every word we speak matters. I believe that we are all one, that we are all connected. What you do affects me, and what I do affects you. That's why I've spent my entire journey asking myself, how can I do better? How can I love better? If you aren't gay, you'll never understand. Just like I will never understand what it's like to be black or transgender or a conservative Christian, I can't understand. But that doesn't mean that I get to deny you, and that doesn't mean that you get to deny me. We must go beyond. We must reach deeper into our souls and find a way to value connection over a lack of understanding. The decision not to allow a Pride Parade in Starkville doesn't make me any less gay, and it certainly isn't going to quiet my voice or make me want to move. But what it does is it tells an important and special part of our community that they, that we, don't matter. When I first told my parents that I was gay, their greatest fear was how I was gonna be treated by other people. And both of my parents are here tonight to support me. I have incredible parents. When I hurt, they hurt. They have seen firsthand how decisions like this hurt someone like me. They know the pain, they have lived it with me. Being gay doesn't just affect me, it affects my family, and it affects my friends. And my mom always, has always told me, love yourself, just love yourself. Isn't that what we are all trying to do? Love who we are? Our challenge as a human being is always how to love in the face of fear, how to love when we will never understand why someone is the way they are. We often choose fear over love because fear gives us this illusion of control, and love, love sets us up to be hurt again. But love is the only part of who we are that allows us to experience the greatness of what it means to be human. In my world, in my bubble, I'm surrounded by support and encouragement all the time. My company, Humidity, its motto is that people are good, and I believe that with my entire heart. I see it every day. I believe that if you look for good, you'll find it. And I see a lot of good that can come out of this entire situation. Perhaps we could all choose to come together, to heal, to let go, to accept, to forgive. None of those are easy things to do. It's a commitment. There has to be a willingness. We have to connect. We have to look in each other's eyes and see the humanity in each other, and there's no other way. And there's no other way. It's that simple. I would love the opportunity to love you, everyone on this panel, everyone in this room. But you have to let me, and I have to let you. I am willing to do that, even if it means I get, may get hurt again. I hope that one day we can all walk together hand in hand. I hope that one day we won't care whose hand we are holding or whose hand another person is holding. I believe in that. I hope for that. Some people call me idealistic, but I really don't care. I'd rather be idealistic than not. I'd rather hope for what I know is possible than to feel defeated by limitation. Every morning I wake up, I journal, I work out, I meditate and pray. I take care of my spirit as best I can because I want to go out into the world with the purpose of making others feel loved. Especially since I've lived through so many times of not being seen or loved, to repeat what has been done to me is to continue the cycle of discrimination. And I refuse, I refuse to do that. So I will keep hoping. I will keep believing in the best of who we are and who we could be because I choose that. One of my personal heroes, Archbishop Desmond Tutu writes, quote, "Is there a place where we can meet, you and me? A place in the middle where we straddle the lines where you are right and I am right too? And both of us are wrong and wronged? Can we meet there and look for the place where the path begins? The path that ends when we forgive?" End quote. Can we show the rest of the world how community can come together in the face of turmoil and confusion? Can we show each other that we respect and honor one another fairly and equally? Can we let go of the need to understand before we decide if we can love or not? Can we rise above our need to be right so that we can connect? We need peace in this world. We need connection in this world. We need forgiveness in this world. And we welcome you and everyone to walk with us on March 24th. Our arms are open. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Onan. All right. Don't do it, don't do it. Guys, enough. Thank you. I beg your pardon, Alderman Vaughn, I didn't hear you.
You scored them out of here, you said that in moments of time.
Yes.
That's why the police is here, so you can score them out of here with that.
Yes, sir. All right. We will now move into a public hearing on rezoning 1801, a request to rezone one lot located at 288 Sand Road from R5 multifamily to R6 residential mobile homes with parcel number 105-21-001.00. Mr. Sanders. It was mine. I'm sorry. It was, it was my timer. I'm sorry, I'm guilty. Do I have to get out now? It was my timer, I'm sorry. Chief, did you know it was mine and you were just doing that? Okay. All right. My apologies, I'm sorry. Okay. Clearly, I don't know how to run my own, my own phone, so. Okay. Mr. Sanders, please. Okay. All right, guys, I need, we need silence. We need silence. Thank you. Mr. Sanders.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board of Alderman. I have before you tonight a consideration of rezoning 18-01 to request a lot located at 288 Sand Hill Road from R5 multifamily to R6 residential mobile homes with the parcel number being 105-21-001.00. The applicant is seeking a rezoning from R5 multifamily to R6 mobile home based upon an error on the zoning map. The properties on the western side of Sand Road were annexed in the city in 1998. When the annexation properties were given R5 designation, the applicant purchased the, excuse me, a mobile home, had it placed on the property. When they came into the building department to inquire what was necessary to connect to city services, they realized the mobile home was not allowed on the property without a conditional use or rezoning. Ten property owners of record within three hundred feet of the subject property were notified directly by mail of their request. A public hearing notice was published in the Starkville Daily News on January the 26, 2018, and a sign was posted on the properties concurrent with the publication of the notice. As of this date, the planning office has received three phone calls inquiring about their request. On February the 13th, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of this request due to the error in the original zoning with the following color of clarification. But the rezoning may, the rezoning be approximately seventy-eight acres of the northern part of parcel one, which extends north of parcel four, as shown in TSC map and on the February 13th, 2017 Planning and Zoning staff report as attachment one. To give you an idea of where the rezoning request is at, this is the city's water treatment plant, and it's essentially across the street from the entrance, and it has a fairly odd U shape size. The parcel to the south is zone R6. The surrounding parcels are R5, and the parcel across the street with the water treatment plant is located is zone M1 Industrial. We happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Any questions to the board at this point in time?
So there's just one mobile home on the property that...
There is one, there is one house which can be seen about right here, and this is the mobile home that was moved to the property, to my understanding, is uninhabited.
The property at all is not inhabited?
No, the mobile home is not inhabited.
The mobile home's not even inhabited? They don't live there?
It's just parked there, it's my understanding.
Okay. And nothing surrounding that area is, has the same zoning, right?
R6 to the south.
Yes, R6 to the south.
There is R6 to the south.
Right here, and this is the subject property. And this is about where the mobile home was currently just placed.
Okay. And the rest of that is R5 multifamily?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else? Alderman Miller?
No.
I'm sorry, I didn't know if you were pausing or if you were having other questions.
Catching me in my policy again.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the board before I open it as a public hearing? Okay? I'm going to open it as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this rezoning, one lot on Sand Road from R5 multifamily to R6 residential mobile home? Now would be the time. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Okay, anyone wishing to speak against? Anyone wishing to speak against? All right, seeing no one, I will close it as a public hearing. All right, thank you. Any further discussion by the board before we go into consideration? Okay? I have consideration of the rezoning of 1801. I'm sorry?
Same move.
Okay. I have a motion for approval from Alderman Carver. Do I have a second? Motion, second from Alderman Vaughn. Any further discussion?
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Alderman Carver, does your motion adopt the clarification made by the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Motion carries by six to one. Thank you. All right, we have a second public hearing, which is on the adoption of Sections One and Two, the City of Starkville Unified Development Code and a modification to the facade requirements. This is our second public hearing on this item. There is no action item tonight, but we will have a presentation by Mr. Havilan and Ms. Corbin.
Yeah, I'm just going to kind of move this pretty quick for the sake of time. Yeah, I'm just going to go over the changes between draft two and draft one. To start off, 1.2 authority, we removed 210 as amended for Mississippi code reference, as suggested by the city attorney. 1.4 Rules of Construction, we added a description of the priority of text in that statement. On 1.10 Transitional Rules, we updated a section of reference for nonconformities and added buildings to the nonconformity list. Then in Administrative and Governing Bodies, on Section 2.12, we removed some redundant sentences, and that's, the removal of this sentence occurred in the next two sections, 1.13 and 1.14. In 1.15 Development Review Committee, we simplified some language to remove redundancies, added some language for the special call requirements to make it consistent with the other bodies. 1.16 The Proposed Architecture Review Committee, we clarified that the city planner will act as a chairman of that committee, and then we also clarified the disqualification statement for the consultant. In 1.17, what was formerly the Tree Advisory Board, we have suggested a name change to the Landscape Advisory Board. We updated the rules and procedures and also removed some redundant language in the Powers and Duties section. Under Administrative Procedures, 2.2.1 Rezoning, we simplified some language in the amendment 2.2.2 Conditional Use, we simplified the formatting, language in the application procedures, also some of the language on the applicant to pay the cost. We need, we do still need to correct the numbering system of that section. There was a program error where it skipped a whole section of numbers. 2.2.3 Variances was another, just simplifying the language of the application procedures, cost, and the action section. 2.2.4 Site Plan and Infrastructure Plans, added language to the application section, added requirements to the survey requirement, defined the method for measuring square footage and building heights, added requirements for spot elevations for sidewalks to meet the ADA requirements. 2.2.5 Architecture Reviews, we changed the terminology on the previous version from building design proposal to building design plan, simplified the language in the application procedure, defined the methodology for measuring square footing and building, footage and building height, and changed the requirements for a licensed architect to align, align with state law. The reason for that, we had previously had in there that you had to be a licensed architect to submit the plans, but according to state law, there's actually a square footage threshold, threshold in a building height threshold before you have to have the license. So we just wanted this to line up what the state qualifies as a licensed architect. And we also added a requirement for a door and window schedule. 2.2.6 Landscape Waivers, this section was not included in the first draft. Once we got to doing the second revision, we realized we didn't have the process for the landscape waiver in there. So we added the process of the landscape waiver that closely aligns the way it's currently done. It's kind of a cross between a DRC and a variance process. 2.2.7 Subdivision, major and minor, we revised the section number for this section and then all the following sections because of the addition of the landscape waiver process. We added the application fee language, added language clarifying the body that will review each step of the application. As you look in there, you see there's like a preliminary plat review and the preliminary plat hearing, and all that's listed out, and we just added some text behind it to clarify exactly what body, board, or committee will be reviewing that portion of it. We added language to allow that minor subdivisions, for minor subdivisions of agricultural, commercial, industrial, and mixed-use zoned lots. 2.2.8 Condo Plat, there is an update of some of the language in that section. 2.2.11 Certificates of Appropriateness in Historic Districts, added language to the application cost of that section. 2.2.13 Nonconforming Uses in Development, we rewrote this section completely from the previous version. The previous version was modeled after a code that was several decades old, once we really got to looking into it, and we found some more modern versions of it that I think closely, closer aligned to what we're trying to accomplish. We still need to further modify some of the language on the repair and restoration restrictions. And then there's a statement in there about, well, we need to remove the tax assessed value and replaced with either improved tax value or an appraised value. And what this is talking about, what is the threshold? Currently, the threshold is a thousand square feet of addition or fifty percent of the value of the structure for construction cost. And we're just trying to solidify what that value is for the fifty percent. And then the last thing would be on the zoning ordinance, the facade portion. This hasn't been changed yet, but we do need to change that section. Currently, it references Architecture Review Board and Architecture Review Committee, and we need to make all of that say Architecture Review Committee.
Okay. Thank you. Before I open it for the public hearing, any questions?
I don't have any questions. I'd just say I know everybody's, couldn't wait to hear about Sections One and Two of the, of the code rewrite. But I appreciate the revisions that are being made. This is truly going to be something that is extremely important for our city moving forward in terms of setting, setting the rules for how our city is going to develop over the next decades, knowing with Section Three, it's going to be the actual codes that are coming. But I'm very happy with the revisions that have been made. I think we still have work to do, and I'm glad we're not acting on this tonight. But what I am glad to see is that we're making good, consistent progress to be able to iron out some of the wrinkles as much as we can. And I look forward to having more public hearings on this matter and to have other meetings with other people that can be involved to get their point across because this is truly going to be something that we got to try to get right, not knowing that a document of this, there's always going to be some things that you can't always anticipate. But I think we're being methodical in the approach. I appreciate city staff's efforts on this, and I look forward to being able to continue more hearings with, invite other public entities to come talk about the Architecture Review Committee and the other issues related to the appraisal or the tax value or other things that we're looking at. So we make sure that when we do decide to implement and adopt this, that we're going to be putting the city in the best spot we can to make sure that the development that we get, and we're going to continue to develop. I guess we have to take the adage that no publicity is bad publicity because Starkville is still going to want to be a destination for people to want to come, and I believe that. I believe that Starkville is going to be a place that people are going to want to come develop, they're going to want to come live, and to be able to get these codes and policies right is extremely important. So thank you all for the work. I look forward for this process to continue as we continue to make refinements so we can get something adopted and we can move forward.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Miller?
Just to be clear, and any member of the board, I guess, can, I'll yield to whoever. So there's just consensus among us that we were going to look at this moving forward, and tonight's just simply a public hearing? This is, this isn't just it?
No, this is, this is just a public hearing. What we're going to do after this is we've got some, some meetings set up with architects, engineers, some builders, to look at the architectural review aspect of it, architectural committee aspect of it, so that when we bring it forward, that will be something that the, that the community is, is aware of and has had input on.
Okay. So I don't just have to drill these two with questions tonight necessarily, so, okay?
We'll have another public hearing, sir.
Okay. Yeah, moving forward, we'll have some conversations.
Absolutely. This is much too important.
I'd like to echo Alderman Walker in his comments about, thank y'all. I know it's a big, this is a big document, and I know I've, I've come by both your offices, you know, over the course of time that y'all have been working on this, and there's, there's papers going everywhere, and y'all have got your nose in a book, and you're doing good work, so I certainly appreciate it, and we'll get there here at some point, so, thank you.
Okay. I will now open it as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak about the changes or Sections One and Two that we're looking at right now with the understanding that we're not, we're adopting nothing tonight? This is just an opportunity to talk about some of the changes that you might be seeing. So, anyone wishing to speak to the board, either for or against on this? Okay? All right, seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing. And the next item on the agenda is under Board Business, which is reconsideration of the special event request by Ms. Turner. Alderman Sistrunk, I see your hand.
What I would like to say is that in hindsight, I feel like we could have handled this much better as, as a board, and I think that our errors are not anything more than an attempt to be consistent in how we treat groups of people and not, not treat this application any differently from any other application that we received. In doing that, what we weren't is we weren't mindful of this being something new for the City of Starkville, being a bit of a growing pain for the City of Starkville. It's not the only, and it won't be the, the last of these that we go through. I do think the last two weeks have given us time to consider several different things related to this application, and I think we're now in a position where we can make a more measured and reasoned vote tonight. I did hear three things tonight that I'd like to address, and first is the, the cost of the in-kind... And first is the, the cost of the in-kind services. It's a fraction of the thirty-two thousand dollars that was mentioned. The estimate was thirty-two hundred dollars, which is pretty much in line with an event of this type for, for other events that we've had. The, the second was a concern that there would be lewd behavior at the parade. I, I know a, a lot of the people here in the audience tonight, and I know that they are respectful people, they love Starkville, they're not going to put Starkville in a position to have to have some intervention. They're, they're, they're going to have a parade, it's going to be a celebration. I don't expect anything that falls into lewd or illegal behavior. And if there is, Chief Nichols, you will have people there? And I'm asking this just to provide some comfort to people for whom that is a concern.
Yes, ma'am, we will be there, just like we are at any, any parade or any event.
All right, very good. And, and the last was the idea of a sponsorship, and that's addressed in, in my motion. So I do have a motion, which I would like to make. I'm moved to rescind the previous denial and approve the two thousand eighteen pride parade with in-kind services listed in the staff report relating to police, utilities, and sanitation to be held on March twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen, without sponsorship of the city of Starkville and with the condition that the applicant provide proof of insurance, meeting the city's special events policy to the sat, to the satisfaction of the city's planning staff and city attorney by March sixteenth, two thousand eighteen.
Okay, which is that writing?
Second.
Okay, a second from Alderman Miller. I have this reduced to writing and pass it to the city clerk, so I will not read it. All right, we have a motion and a second discussion. Alderman Carver, I saw your...
We spoke of indemnification tonight, is that something that's covered within that motion, city attorney?
They provided the indemnification the first time around, yes, sir.
Okay, any further discussion?
I'd just like to say publicly, you know, I wasn't able to get back to everybody. I had several serious threats, tons of emails. I guess everybody's number here may have been publicized nationally. If, you know, if they, if someone started cursing me, I just wouldn't, I wouldn't take the call. Received numerous, numerous serious threats to myself and my family, got them documented and things such as that. But I just wasn't able to get back to everybody. Tried to respond most of all to Ward one constituents, secondly, to city of Starkville constituents, then anybody from another part of the country. I just wasn't able to get to all the phone calls. And I probably speak for everybody on the board saying it was the most, most connection I've had with the citizens here, but just oftentimes know that, to that, and then just an everyday job that I couldn't get to all the phone calls, emails, and texts, so, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Carver. Anyone, Alderman Walker?
I'm not sure how this is going to go tonight, but, but I'm hopeful that with the reconsideration that, that is, that we do do that. I think it's important, I, I agree with a lot of what I heard tonight. I agree with Pastor Buckner in the sense that we have to find a way to, to separate how we act here in, in terms of what may be our beliefs, and that's totally, totally fine. You have to be able to, to separate that. I also believe that it is probably worth a policy discussion that this board needs to have in terms of special events, in terms of what in-kind services, because the number of events that we have, I think that is a legitimate policy discussion that this board should have. And I look forward in the future to being able to have that discussion. I also think that is very important, that the Constitution and the rule of law matters. And I don't think there's any question about it, that if this lawsuit continues, the city of Starkville is going to lose. And the thirty-two hundred dollars of in-kind service, services that, that the city will expend to have this parade, I, I think it would have probably been in the, the people in the audience that are pro this, I think of the number of people that are in this room showed up for the parade, I think they would have probably have deemed that successful. I think we're probably going to have a parade on March twenty-fourth, and I, I think it has the opportunity to be something that could be good for our community. I hope it's something that's good for our community. And I hope people will come out and enjoy it, and if it's not what you want, then don't, don't take part. That's, that's part of, that's part of choice. And so I hope we take that into consideration. I also think that the thirty-two hundred dollars at in-kind services pales in comparison to what it would likely be when, and it, when we lose this lawsuit. It could easily be on a conservative estimate that we're going to be paying our city attorney and the others' attorneys at least ten times that amount, and that's probably being conservative. If it goes further than that, it could be real money, real money. And no matter which side of the fence that you're on, I think we have to figure out that is that truly the best use of the taxpayers' dollars when we have so many issues that are, that merit dollars being spent. And so I'm hopeful that, you know, not here to change anybody's mind. If you believe what you believe, then that's what you believe. But I, I would hope that people would reconsider the opportunity for what this means for Starkville. We've had, and I, I, you know, I feel Alderman Carver and other people that have gotten not so nice phone calls and emails. I think we've all gotten those from one side or the other. It's a very divisive issue, like anything, somebody said polarized. We're, we are definitely polarized, and it's not just this issue, but we have this side and that side. And we have to find a way to be able to, to agree to disagree, but still at the same time realize we're all in this place together, and we got to figure out how to, how to move forward. So I would hope that after tonight, no matter what happens, there's going to be people that are happy, there's going to be people that are disappointed. There's no question about that. But I'm hopeful that we can all realize, like Alderman Miller said, two weeks from now, we're going to be back here, and we're going to be making decisions on other things, and we all have to play in the same sandbox, and we're all going to see you out and about in town. And we hope that that's, if there's something that you disagree with, it's certainly appropriate to let one of us know and say, hey, we, we didn't appreciate that decision that you made, and we'd like for you to try to represent us better. That's totally fair, on, on both sides of, of the, of the fence. But I hope, again, be civil, if we can be civil and say people, we agree, but I think we're all looking for ways to be respectful, and I think that's what everybody's looking for. How do you gain respect? How do you gain respect? And one way you gain respect is to give respect. So with that being said, I'm hopeful that there will be some reconsideration, not just from, not on the moral standpoint, but it's truly an economic issue at this point. It is an economic issue in terms of what it's going to cost the taxpayers of the city of Starkville if we don't change our course. And it's going to cost us a whole lot more if we don't change course than it is to, to put this parade on. So with that, I yield there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walker. All right, Alderman Little.
I don't disagree with what any, any of my colleagues have said so thus far about the matter. I appreciate the comments we heard tonight, the last meeting, both pro and con. I feel like I've had a lot more time in the last couple of weeks to ponder this further. It was kind of thrown at us, if you recall. I was out of the country the day of the work session, came back that night and then had a glance at the agenda. And I think two other board members that voted against this weren't there as well. And Alderman Perkins had not realized, I guess at the time, just exactly what it, what it was that was being put on consent that day. But over the past two weeks versus just a couple of days allowed before a previous board meeting, I've been able to ponder the parade matter further than this board's previous vote. I believe that city staff and our mayor should always be forthcoming and fully transparent to the board of Alderman. The allegations made in the recent complaint clearly show that transparency and disclosure was not the intent of city staff, coupled with a lack of communication from the mayor to this board. At first blush, I felt that this matter was intended to be slipped past the board, and my, my initial thoughts were later confirmed. This is disappointing and frustrating, to say the least, and I say that to city staff as well. Furthermore, I believe that the city of Starkville's best interest or interests are better served in moving forward beyond this and pressing forward on other positive matters facing our community. That being said, while I maintain my principled, principled position, I plan to abstain on the pending vote.
Thank you. Anything further? Any other comments from the board?
I got one more.
I'm sorry.
Just in my nine years in office, this has probably been the most civil debate I think we've ever had. I will give both the mayor and Alderman Miller for stepping up. And I think each side, pending an outburst, has shown extreme respect for the other side, has shown that you can't have a civil debate in, in a public setting. And I guess in my nine years, this has been the most civil I've ever seen, so, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Carver, and thank you, audience. Yes, Alderman.
And just briefly, I don't know how the vote's going to turn out, but let's maintain that through the rest of the meeting despite the decision, please, thank you.
Yes, and I'm, I want to speak publicly for a moment about the, the attempt to slip it by you. I, I certainly did not attempt to slip it by you. I did not realize that a pride parade was something that was not recognized as a pride parade for the LGBT, for the LGBT community. And that may be because I have traveled rather extensively and recognize that, that's the, that's the reference. So I just wanted to say it was not, it was not intentional to do that, so, anyway.
And for the clarity of the audience, the abstention goes with the majority of the vote?
Correct.
It will be counted as a vote?
Unless there's a tie.
Okay, all right, well, in that case, we will vote now. I'm assuming no further discussion. We will vote now, and as Alderman Miller said, no matter which way it goes, do not, please, no outbursts, please. Okay, thank you all. All right, we will do this by roll call vote. If you would answer yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name. Alderman Carver?
Nay.
Alderman Sistrunk?
Yea.
Alderman Little?
Abstain.
Alderman Walker?
Yea.
Alderman Miller?
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn?
Nay.
Okay, we have, we have a tie, three to three, and then one abstention. And with that in mind, that means the mayor votes to break the tie. I will vote in favor of the parade. So motion passes by four to three with one abstention, okay? All right, next item on the agenda, thank you all. If y'all want to go ahead and take your opportunity to exit, please do so, but do so quietly. Thank you. I have a motion for approval for the claim stocket. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Walker. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Guys, I got two nays by a vote of five, five to two against, I mean, in favor of the claim stocket, thank you. And that takes us to executive session, so we will, I need a motion to go into a closed session to determine the need for executive session. A motion from Alderman Sistrunk, I have a second.
Mayor, is there any need to go into executive session?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Ask the lawyer.
Depends on whether y'all want to be briefed on next steps in the litigation, and I can do that now or later, it's your discretion.
Later.
Mayor, I move that we stand, I move that we stand, we got a motion, have a minute, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Yeah, I have a motion. That's okay, no problem. And I had a second.
Who made the motion?
Alderman Sistrunk made the motion.
We did have a second?
Well, I, I thought that's what you were doing when you spoke up, so my, my bad. Okay, I have a second from Alderman Miller. Any further discussion? All in favor? Say aye. Okay, I'm sorry. Roll call? Yea? Alderman Carver? Alderman Sistrunk?
Yea.
Okay, I have...
Yea.
Okay, four, four to two?
Nay.
Nay.
Going into executive session by a vote...
Close session.
I'm sorry, closed session to determine the need for executive session, I vote a four to two, so. We will clear the room, please. Mr. Emile, are you wanting?